With an "aye," that will establish who is attending the meeting. Commissioner Blackshear.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Thanks. Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Thanks. Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
And Commissioner Tibbs? I don't think I see Commissioner Tibbs yet. Okay. I think we have a quorum without Commissioner Tibbs, so we can go ahead and get started, and hopefully he will join us in the near future. So our first order of business is to establish a telephonic meeting. And I think I had turned that over to our attorney. Is that correct, Alex?
Yeah, this is Alex Dickerson. Just wanted to... The motion that needs to be made is that the proposed agenda constitutes essential business, and that a meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and well-being of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay. Do I have a volunteer willing to make a motion to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Looks like we've got two seconds. All right. So I will go through and do a roll call vote again. Commissioner Blackshear. Commissioner Blackshear, are you here?
Sorry, technical difficulties. Aye.
No worries. Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy? Are you there, Commissioner Murphy? One more time?
Yes, aye.
Thanks. And Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Okay, great.
And this is Brian Tibbs. I'm here too.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. All right. Our first item of business is the adoption of the agenda, which was emailed out to you, and an updated version was provided earlier today. Is there anyone who would like to volunteer to make a motion that we adopt the agenda? If you could raise your hand, and then I will call on you. And otherwise, I will call on you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll make motion to adopt agenda.
Perfect. Thank you. And Commissioner Blackshear, would you like to second that?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you so much. I will... Any other discussion? If you have anything? I don't see any other hands. So I will go through and do another roll call. Commissioner Blackshear?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy? I think I heard you. Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Great. Perfect. Thank you. The next item of business is the approval of the minutes, and I understand that due to some technical difficulties, the minutes did not actually get sent out to all of the commissioners until this afternoon. I don't know if anyone has had a chance to review them yet. I will defer to others on the commission. We can either defer the vote on this until everyone has had a chance to review, or if some people have had a chance to review and would like to proceed with a motion to approve the minutes from our prior meeting. I guess I will open that up for discussion. Anybody have a... Any of the commissioners want to share thoughts? Have you had a chance to review it? Director Kemp, do we... If the commissioners are comfortable voting on it?
Yeah, I would just per normal ask for a motion to move forward. We just wanted to acknowledge that we had sent the minutes out at a later time than we typically do. And if the commissioners are comfortable entertaining the motion, then you can move forward. If they... If anybody objects or wants more time, then we can entertain it at the next commission meeting.
Okay. So how about that? Do I have a motion? Does anyone want to make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the last meeting? And if so, raise your hand.
I move to adopt the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay. And do I have a second? Anyone who would like to second? Commissioner Johnson?
I second the motion.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, I will do another roll call vote. Commissioner Blackshear?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
And Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Okay. The next item is the recognition of council members, and we're going to take them as we've seen you join us. Councilman Hager, I know you are on the line. Would you like to speak now, or do you want to wait until your item comes up later, or if you have an item on the agenda later?
Yeah, I've got number nine, which is going to be deferred, and then I've got number 18, which is Chandler Reserve, that I asked for a one-meeting deferral, but if I need to wait till it comes up, that'll be fine.
Okay, okay. Lisa, is there anything that you want to add to that?
Hi, Vice Chair Farr. This is Lisa Milligan. Item number... The Chandler Reserve is being deferred to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to have a community meeting then, a week or two prior to that, so people understand the impact that the traffic's going to have, and let them weigh in on it. I know it's a concept plan, but I don't want them to get shell-shocked. And I was going to say that Mount Juliet, on the other side of this project, is 276 houses on the Wilson County side, and they have turned them down at this point in time. So altogether, if this goes through, in addition, Mount Juliet and Wilson County lets the other one go through, we're going to be talking about over 500 houses going into that area. So I'm going to make sure... I just got the traffic impact today, which is 65 pages long, so I haven't had time to read it. So I appreciate it being passed till the next meeting, and I will sign out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Virture, I see your hand up, and I was going to call on you anyway, so please feel free.
Thank you so much, commissioners. Yes, I'm Councilwoman Virture, at 901 Split Oak Drive. That's Antioch, Tennessee, representing District 28. I'm speaking on 2015 S-166-003. That's the Payne Road Estate. For the viewing audience and the neighbors within the district, this is an administrative approval, but I want to be on record as the voice of the neighbors. This particular developer has been in violation as it relates to many metro department citations for noncompliance. Also, just want to add, and I hope that the review of this final site plan did include a thorough review, as this development is in a flood-prone area. In the past, and we're dealing with a subdivision out here now where the plan was approved, and now as a city, we're stating that yes, maybe we shouldn't have allowed for development to occur there. So I just want to be on the record as the voice of the neighbors to make sure that as a city, hopefully, we're doing a more thorough review of these plans if we're going to continue to allow development in flood-prone areas. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilman Sledge, I think I saw you here.
Yes, yeah. Thanks, all. So I have a few items that are on the agenda, but the only one that I'm speaking to is the one that is not on either consent or deferred, which are two items put together, Item 27A and B. These involve a minor community plan amendment and then a rezoning from basically industrial to allow for multifamily. This is at 101 Factory Street. Wanted to give the commission just a little bit of background on this area and the conversations that have been happening. We did have the required community plan amendment meeting, and this particular area is actually... This parcel is undeveloped. It's right behind... When I say behind, just to the south of Treveka's... Treveka Nazarene University's campus. They have been in support... There have been several letters, I know, that have come through in support of this from neighboring properties, and I know that there is one neighboring property that is opposed to this redevelopment. I think they seem to be concerned about the impacts that they have themselves on the community, and how that could impact potentially people who would be living there. One thing I want commissioners to know is that there actually are residences that are the same distance from that property. There are single-family residences, and then there's actually a short-term rental that I'm aware of that's in that area as well. I have never received any complaints from either residents or industrial or commercial users in this area, and in fact, the fact that all these other neighboring properties are actually supportive of this multifamily development, I think is important. Regarding the parcel itself, the parcel, even though it is in an industrial zoning right now, as probably all of you know, in the district I represent, there are many areas that were industrial that are rapidly changing with the expansion of our urban core. This particular property is within walking distance, basically right through Treveka's campus, to one of our most heavily used and most accessible transit lines, which would be the Murfreesboro Pike, BRT light. So it's primed for people who would be living in this multifamily development to be able to access transit in an easy and efficient way. It's also near, but not in, the boundaries of the Chestnut Hill neighborhood. So I know the commission considered and improved the Wedgewood-Houston-Chestnut-Hill Study Plan. This parcel is not in that study plan area, but is close by, and it does not in any way, shape, or form go against what the intentions of that plan was. And the final thing I'll note is Factory Street and then the northern boundary as well, these are streets that have no... Really no infrastructure. And so the ability to create walkability in these areas that would be directly adjacent to a neighborhood, being Chestnut Hill, and then to a campus, Treveka, which also has more than 500 residents at Treveka Towers, to me, that's really important, because we'll be establishing sort of a missing link in infrastructure that I would hope could expand and fully link these two pieces, because I know how involved in communications Treveka and Chestnut Hill neighbors are. So with that, I would ask the commission's approval tonight, and I really appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Very much, Councilman. I think that that is it for our council members. Lisa, did I miss anybody? Lisa or Lucy? I think we're good. Okay. Well, our next item...
No, I don't see anyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the deferral agenda. Lisa, are you going to walk us through that?
Hi, yes, I am. Oh, my dog may help me. This is Lisa Milligan with Metro Planning, and I'm going to read the following items are for deferral or withdrawal. Item number one on page three of your agenda, 2020Z012TX001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number 2A, 2007SP037002, the Bell Road Blue Hole Road SP amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. The associated case on page four, 2B, 95P025007, Millwood Commons PUD cancellation. It's... The staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number three, 2020SP051001, 1411 Dickerson Pike SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item number four, 2004 UD002011, Villages of Riverwood Section M modification. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item number five, 2020S145001, the Bordeaux Agri Hood. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item number six, 2020Z096PR001. It's a rezoning request on Chadwell Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item number seven on page five of your agenda, 2020Z108PR001. It's a request to rezone on West Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item number eight, 2020Z138PR001. It's a request to rezone on Meadow Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item number nine, 2020S176001. It's a subdivision on Swinging Bridge. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number 12, 2020SP050001, 2512 Briscoe Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 14, 2019S109001, Richards Farms subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number 16, 2020S203001, Old Matthews and Webster. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 17, 2020S204001, Red Heights. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 18, 2020S207001, Chandler Reserve. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. And item number 29 on page nine of your agenda, 2020Z102PR001. It's a request to rezone on Martin and Humphrey Street. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 30, 2000P003002, the Riverwalk PUD periodic review. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. So just to confirm once more the items for deferral/withdrawal, items number one, 2A, 2B, item three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 14, 17, 18, 29, and 30.
Also, 12 and 16.
Sorry. Okay. And 12 and 16. Okay. Commissioners, so you have heard the list for withdrawal, deferral or withdrawal. Do I see anyone who would like to make a motion to adopt the list? Commissioner Tibbs?
Make motion to adopt?
Do I have a volunteer for a second? Commissioner Johnson?
I second the motion.
Thank you very much. It's a proper motion and second. Do we have any discussion? If not, I will go ahead and do a roll call vote. Commissioner Blackshear?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
And Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next item is the consent agenda, and it's back to you, Lisa.
Yes, before I read... Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
No worries.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. On page five of your agenda, item 10A, 2020CP005003, East Nashville Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan by changing from District Industrial to T4 Urban Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy for properties located on East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case, 10B, 2020Z134PR001. It's a request to rezone from IR to MUGANS for properties located on East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 11, 2020SP045001, Kubota at White's Creek Pike. It's a request to rezone from R40 and CL to SP for properties located on White's Creek Pike to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, only for the portion of the SP associated with farm equipment sales. Item number 13 on page six of your agenda, 2020SP054001, 3808 Clegg Horn Senior Living. It's a request to rezone from SCR... It's a request to rezone from SCR to SP zoning for property located on Clegg Horn Avenue to permit assisted living and multifamily. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 15 on page six, 2020S188001, Rivergate View. It's a request for concept plan approval for property located on Marsha Drive to permit nine single-family residential lots. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 19 on page seven of your agenda, 2020S21001, Novel Harpeth Heights. It's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 615 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 20, 2020S213001, Old Burkitt Mixed Use. It's a request for concept plan approval to create six lots and dedicate right-of-way on properties located on Nolansville Pike and Old Burkitt Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including the additional condition as follows. With the submittal of the final site plan, the developers shall work with public works and community groups to evaluate and identify the appropriate tools to address concerns about traffic and safety impacts on the adjacent residential streets to which this project will connect. The tools to be evaluated will include a signage plan that is consistent with accepted federal, state, and local standards. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself to that item. Item number 21 on page eight, 6983P004, Hickory Village Commercial PUD Revision and Final. It's a request to revise the preliminary plan and for site plan approval for property located at 5055 Old Hickory Boulevard to permit a restaurant. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 22, 2020HL008001. It's a request to apply a historic landmark overlay district to property located on Rosa Parks Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 23, 2020Z135PR001. It's a request to rezone from RS5 to RM20ANS for property located on Witsett Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 24, 2020Z136PR001. It's a request to rezone from RS5 to R6A for property located on Fox Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 25, 2020Z140PR001. It's a request to rezone from RS5 to RM20ANS for property located at 18 Willis Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page nine of your agenda, item number 26, 2020Z142PR001. It's a request to rezone from RA to IWD for property located on Haney Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. I would like to note that there was an additional condition that was added to item number 13 that I failed to mention, and I apologize. Item number 13, 2020SP054001, was approved with conditions and disapproved without all conditions, including a modified condition two to read as follows. Parking at final site plan shall meet the minimum amounts proposed with the preliminary SP. The remaining items on the consent agenda are item number 31 under Other Business on page 10 of your agenda, a contract renewals... Contract renewals for Greg Claxton, Abby Rickoff, Kyle Lampert, Deborah Sullivan, Jean Burse, and Jordan Dunnevin. Item number 32, a new employee contract for Lisa Donahue. And item number 37 to accept the director's report.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. I'm glad to hear we have so many contracts renewing. Otherwise, we would have had a staffing gap there. So the items on the consent agenda are items 10A, 10B, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 31, 32, and 37. Is that correct?
12 and 16 were shifted over to the deferral list.
Okay, sorry. Okay. So the same list minus nine items, 12 and 16. Okay. All right, commissioners. I see that I have Commissioner Tibbs. Are you ready to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I make a motion to move to approve.
Okay, wonderful. Do I have a second? Commissioner Sims? Commissioner Gobble?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any other discussion before we do our final vote? All right. With that, I will do another roll call vote for the motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Blackshear?
I think Lisa may have noticed this, and maybe I just missed it, but I wanted to note my refusal from 13, and with that, I say aye.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Lawson, are you there?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
And Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. So we are now on to our items to be considered.
Chair, this is Lucy Kemp with the Planning Commission. I wanted to note that Councilmember Johnson joined the call, and typically, our practice is to ask... ask if any late joining council members would want to speak.
Oh. Okay.
So I would just.
Okay. Commissioner, which Commissioner?
Councilmember Courtney Johnston joined.
Okay.
So maybe.
All right, so before we go on to the items to be considered, Council Lady Johnston, are you interested in speaking now? Are you here?
Well, you gave the opportunity, so I think it's all right to proceed.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll keep an eye on if she unmutes, we'll give her a shot to join us. All right, so the items that we will be hearing tonight, I just want to confirm, are twenty-seven A and B and item twenty-eight. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you very much. So for the listeners at home, we have provided multiple ways to participate in the telephonic meeting as we're getting ready to move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Normally we take the applicant first and then supporters and opponents. But because of the different ways for people to participate, we'll be taking supporters and opponents together. But to help us, when you do call in, please make sure that you state your name and address and whether you support or oppose the request. As usual, we took comments, we took emailed comments through Tuesday at three and at the start of each public hearing, Lisa will give a summary of how many email comments were received for each item. We have a call-in number for members of the public who wish to call in and testify. Please wait until the public hearing for your item begins before calling. It's a queue, so we don't want you testifying before the wrong case. If you're calling, please be aware that there is a legally required thirty-second delay. That means if you watch your screen while you're commenting, you will see that you're slightly behind, you'll see it slightly behind you as you're actually speaking. So it works best if you focus on talking to us and ignore your screen while you're talking. For each item, we'll let you know when it's time to call in and at the beginning, as we noted, we'll ask Lisa to give account of all of the emailed comments and that would be a good time, a good cue that it's time to call in and you'll have time to connect to one of our operators. So again, the items we're hearing tonight are items twenty-seven A and twenty-seven B and item twenty-eight. And with that, we're ready to begin the first item. So Lisa, I understand you're going to be operating the slides and staff will be presenting the case. So we're ready to get started with item twenty-seven A.
Okay, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is Stephanie McCullough presenting item number twenty-seven A on your agenda. Twenty twenty CP 0011-001 is an amendment, is a request to amend the South Nashville Community Plan. The associated zoning request will be presented after this. The applicant's request is to amend the South Nashville Community Plan for the property located at 101 Factory Street. During the plan amendment determination process, staff identified the request as a minor amendment but required a community meeting. Additionally, staff expanded the study area to the adjacent parcel 525 Lester Avenue, which completes the block. Next slide, please. Staff recommendation is to approve the plan amendment request. Next slide. The current policies for the study area are District Industrial, which you see in blue, and Conservation in bright green. There's additional conservation policy west of the study area, which indicates a flood plain around Browns Creek. But those in the study area and in other portions are for steep slopes. The requested policy, T4 Urban Mixed Use Neighborhood is in the dark pink or purple to, just to the west of the study area. And then north of the site is an area of District Major Institutional Policy, which includes the Trebekka Nazarene University. Next slide, please. Although the planning staff determined this to be a minor amendment, the applicant was required to participate in a community meeting, which was held on October 27, 2020 via WebEx. We had approximately fifteen people participating in the meeting, which included staff, applicant team, the district council member, and the interested neighbors. During that meeting, none of the attendees on the online meeting expressed any opinions regarding the proposed plan amendment. After the meeting, planning staff received two requests for, via email for clarification of the case and one comment was submitted for the related SP, which led to the deferral of the case from the November 2020 meeting. Next slide, please. So Nashville Next Growth, Growth and Preservation Concept Map provides guidance for a countywide, from a county-wide perspective. The concept map designates the study area is within transition and infill area, which is between a center, which includes Trebekka and the special impact area to the south. Transition and infill areas support a variety of uses that serve as a transition in scale and intensity of use between areas. These areas have moderately dense residential and small-scale offices that are appropriate along and around prominent corridors and centers to provide a harmonious connection to surrounding neighborhoods, or in this case, as that transition between the special impact area to the south and the district and the center to the north. Next slide. T4 Urban Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy is intended to maintain, enhance, and create urban mixed-use neighborhoods with a development pattern that contains a variety of housing along with mixed-use, commercial, and institutional and light industrial development. T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Areas are served by high levels of connectivity with complete street networks, sidewalks, bikeways, and existing or planned mass transit. Next, please. These T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Areas are typically applied to areas that are in close proximity to evolving centers or corridors, areas with high vacancy rates, or where there is an express interest in the area's development pattern progressing to promote a mixture of uses, which include a variety of housing types and greater connectivity. Additionally, buildings at the edges of the T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy Areas form transitions in scale and massing where it adjoins lower intensity policy areas, with thoughtful attention given to the placement and orientation of buildings within these edges as they relate to their surroundings. Next slide. The existing transportation infrastructure is adequate to support the T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy based on preliminary study by, of the policy. Factory Street, which changes to Woodycrest as you move toward the east, is classified as a collector avenue. Collector avenues are streets which are low speed and low to medium volume that provide circulation within and between neighborhoods. The study area shown in red is one-half mile from Murphysboro Pike, which is an evolving corridor that has a variety of transit options and is classified as an arterial boulevard. Arterial boulevards are medium-to-high-speed, high-volume streets that serve longer trips within and between different communities within the city. Next. The study area is surrounded by three policy areas. The T4 Urban Mixed Use Neighborhood, which is what was requested, District Major Institutional to the north, and District Industrial, which is the current policy and to the south. There's a large area of conservation west of the T4 Mixed Use Area, which I already discussed as the flood plain for Browns Creek. Next slide. And this is just a little bit more about the district policies, just because they're kind of unique in regards to the transect policies. The Community Character Manual also includes descriptions of the district policy areas, which serve a special purpose and limited function. Each district has its own built character as well as its own operational and land use needs. Each interacts differently with its surroundings or with the surrounding policy areas. Districts are designed to minimize negative impacts on adjacent development and complement surrounding development patterns in adjacent transit areas. There's six types listed that you see on your screen. Let's see, Destination Retail, Employment Center, Major Institutional and Office Concentration Districts have more permeable edges or are in locations where they can interact with adjacent neighborhood centers and corridors and provide resources and positive benefits for the community. District Industrial and District Impact Policy Areas often require greater separation or buffer from adjacent uses due to their potential to negatively impact surrounding neighborhood centers, corridors, and open spaces. I will say there's a distinction between District Industrial and District Impact. District Industrial allows for non-hazardous uses while District Impact is more of those hazardous uses that you would expect. Next slide, please. The current zoning for the study area is IWD or Industrial Warehousing Distribution. This zoning policy is intended for a wide range of warehousing, wholesaling, and bulk distribution uses. Next. Here you see the existing land use. The applicant's property is currently vacant, which is one factor that's considered with the T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy. While the area has a range of housing options, additional housing types should be provided in strategic logations, generally in existing commercial centers or corridors. The District Industrial Policy applied to the study area is because of its previous use. The study area is at the edge of the policy. While there have been concerns countywide regarding the loss of industrial land across the county, the adjacency of the study area to District Major Institutional and T4 neighborhood, or T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood, as well as the proximity to Murphysboro Pike, makes this area appropriate for the extension of the T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy. Next slide. So in summary, the application of T4 Urban Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy is appropriate in the site for the following reasons. The concept map's vision for the area to serve as a transitioned infill area between the center and a special impact area. The proximity of the study area to a center and evolving corridor is in accordance with the characteristics of the T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy. The property is vacant, which provides an opportunity for infill development that can serve as a transition between the District Major Institutional and District Industrial Policies. Application of T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Policy to the study area provides an opportunity for additional housing types. Existing transportation infrastructure is adequate to support the change and the proximity to the existing T4 Mixed Use Neighborhood Area, Urban Mixed Use Neighborhood Area, and the permeable nature of the District Major Institutional Policy and the evolving uses of the District Industrial Policy make this an appropriate use. Next slide. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this plan amendment.
Great, thank you. And I guess I should have noted this in the beginning, from the beginning. We're going to hear items twenty-seven A and twenty-seven B together, but we will vote on them separately. So I guess we are ready for item twenty-seven B.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm going to do an audio check before I begin. Can you hear me clearly?
We can hear you well.
Okay. The next item on this evening's agenda is item twenty-seven B, 2020 SP-048-001, 101 Factory Street Multifamily SP. Next slide, please. This is a request to permit two hundred and four multifamily residential units. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions if the associated community plan amendment is approved and disapproved, the associated community plan amendment is not approved. Next slide, please. The site is located at 101 Factory Street, at the southeast corner of Factory Street and Geiser Street, and contains 5.89 acres. The site is relatively flat and is currently vacant. Factory Street is classified as a residential collector on the Major Collector Street Plan. Culver Street and Geiser Street run along the site to the east and south respectively. Both streets are local streets. Trebekka Nazarene University is located across Factory Street to the north and slightly to the east. Next slide, please. As previously stated, the zoning is IWD, which is intended for a wide range of warehousing, wholesaling, and bulk distribution uses. Next slide, please. The current policy is District Industrial and we will go ahead and move on as Stephanie completely covered the proposed planning's policy amendment. Next slide, please. The plan proposes a multifamily residential development, including a maximum of two hundred, two hundred and four units. The plan consists of three structures. Buildings one and two are located along the primary frontage, Factory Street, and the northern portion of the site. Building three is located towards the rear of the site and fronts Culver Street. The plan limits height for all structures to four stories and sixty-five feet. Parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the Metro Zoning Code, is provided in the form of surface parking spaces primarily on the interior of the site. The site will be accessed from Geiser Street and Factory Street. An eight-foot sidewalk and four-foot wide planting strip is provided along Factory Street, which meets the standards of the Major Collector Street Plan. Sidewalks, which meet the standard for a local street, will be provided along Culver and Geiser Street. Sidewalk connections will be provided from the internal sidewalk network to the sidewalks proposed along each street fringe. The plan provides architectural standards pertaining to, but not limited to, glazing, materials, suits, and facade articulation. Next slide, please. In conclusion, as previously stated with our recommendation, staff recommends approval with conditions subject to the approval of the associated community plan amendment. This concludes our presentation.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we are now ready to open the public hearing. Is the applicant on, hold on, I need to switch views. Is the applicant on the line? And if so, can you raise your hand? So I know to call on you? Great.
Yes, this is Andrew Walters with Catalyst Design Group. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. And just so that you know, you'll have ten minutes and Sean will be keeping track of the time and we'll give you a two-minute warning if you'd like to reserve that time for rebuttal. And just so that the public knows, we will have, the applicant will have their time and then we will give, notice that it's time for the public to start calling in. So if the applicant would like to go?
Okay, sure thing. Fantastic. Again, this is Andrew Walters with Catalyst Design Group, 5100 Tennessee Avenue here in Nashville. Joined today by John Shepherd with Elmington Capital. Hopefully he's unmuted because I think he's going to probably do the majority of our presentation.
I am.
Hey, John. Okay. So I think Patrick did a really good job covering our site. That's our site plan there. I would say one mild correction to the staff report that we forgot to mention to Patrick going into this. The site actually has quite a bit of topo coming up from Factory Street to a high point sort of in the center of the site and then back down. If you've been on Geiser Street, it's actually, there's quite a bit of topography that heads down Geiser. But nevertheless, that's part of why the site is configured in the way we have shown it here. Just a couple small things mentioned on our site and we're going to reserve the rest of our time for John and for questions that come up. But we are providing the Major Collector Street Plan, street scape widening around the entirety of the frontage, which is actually a significant investment, as Colby sort of alluded to, on Factory Street, Geiser, and Culver. We're expanding the pavement width to meet the minimum standards of the MTSB and provide the street scaping and walkability with new sidewalks around the entirety of the perimeter. Other than that, I like to kick it over to John and let him cover a little bit of some of what's been studied from the developer side and then again, reserve the remaining amount of our time for questions.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name's John Shepherd. My address is 118 16th Avenue South, Nashville, Tennessee. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Elmington Capital. As Andrew mentioned, Elmington, we are a local company in Nashville for about ten years. I believe the last project that we were before this body for was the Reservoir, which is a large mixed-use development project at Eighth and Edge Hill that we are currently under construction on. This is a significantly smaller project than that, but we are, I wanted to provide some background on our approach and the site selection that's gone into it and support, pass recommendation on the plan amendment and the rezoning. So we're long-term owners and investors. We don't flip properties, so we're here for the long run. This property in particular has been vacant for many years, so we're not taking industrial buildings and tearing them down or anything like that. I think part of the reason why it's been vacant, it's not very conducive to industrial use. There is some topography, as Andrew mentioned, and it's not very convenient for building large warehouses or having tractor-trailers driving around on the site. It is on the doorstep of Trebekka Nazarene University, one of the city's most prominent educational institutions. It's also across the street from existing single-family houses, as Councilman Sledge mentioned. And it's on the periphery of the planned district or policy area that we're applying for, T4 MU. So this isn't an island in the sea, in a sea of industrial property by any means. It is a staff recommended, or a staff mentioned in the staff report, designated by Nashville Next as a transitional area between Trebekka to the north and the special impact area to the south. It actually borders more non-industrial policy area than industrial policy area. In fact, the plan amendment would reduce the overall boundary between industrial and non-industrial plan areas by about a third. We did hold a community meeting. There was no oppositional comments at the community meeting. We did have one neighbor who reached out subsequent to the community meeting with concerns that Stephanie mentioned, leading to the deferral in November. We've had two or three different individual We've had two or three different individual discussions with with that neighbor to try to address their concerns. We made some adjustments to the plan in response and emphasized a few different things. You know, one is that we don't, we're orienting the site towards Factory and not towards Culver Street, so we're directing traffic onto that residential collector street and not not onto Culver Street. You can see the the two access points are on Geyser, and then the main access is on Factory Street. And there is a concern about just the the narrowness of the roads as they are currently. And as Andrew mentioned, we're actually expanding the paved surface in the right-of-way of both Culver Street and Factory to make them more convenient for all vehicles that are coming in and out of that area. And as part of our site selection process, you know, we wanted to make sure that it was going to be appropriate site for for the uses that we're, you know, we're intending. And a big part of that, in any in any site that is adjacent to industrial areas is noise. And so we, you know, we went out and and had our had a sites or a noise study done to make sure that that, you know, we had that aspect covered. And there we got the results of that this week. We submitted them, but I think after the cutoff date for for additional consideration. But the the noise study returned a decibel level of between 53 and 63 decibels, which is is very reasonable, if not on the low side, for an urban mixed-use or residential property. For comparison, we sampled as well, noise levels at two, you know, very high-end luxury residential properties within a couple miles of here, crossroads in the Gulch and Gossett on Church. And both of the noise levels there were, I think, 73 or higher. And that 10-decibel difference doesn't sound like a lot, but the way that the 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 sound scale, the acoustic scale works, that's about a doubling of noise, perceptible noise as you would experience it on the site. So the site's about, you know, half as loud as as some of the kind of most high-end luxury residential real estate in the city. So we we feel very comfortable about the uses that we have intended for the site. We think that, you know, site's appropriate for the the T4MU policy, and we've made a, you know, thorough outreach to surrounding neighbors. We've secured about half a dozen letters of support from our neighbors, surrounding business owners, property owners, including several different industrial property owners and industrial business owners, you know, all of whom are supportive of the the plan amendment and the rezoning requests. You know, they don't perceive there to be potential for for conflicts of use there. And and we support staff's recommendation in that regard. So with that, we'll we'll reserve the remainder of our time and are happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so we are now ready to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in, and your screens should show a call-in number. So please go ahead and call in now. You don't have to wait to call until others have called or until they have finished speaking. As we said, you're placed in a queue and we'll pull you up. Please only call for this case. And when you begin your testimony, make sure that you state your name and your address and whether you support or oppose this item. Because we're not able to display a timer visually, Sean will be keeping track of time, and she will give you a 30-second warning when your time is nearly up. She'll also let you know when your time is up so that we can disconnect and move on to the next caller. So while we wait for the callers to get into the queue, Lisa, did we receive any emails on this item?
Hi, yes, we received emails from two individuals in support of the application. We did receive a call with questions and concerns.
Okay. Sean, do we have any callers yet for this item?
Vice Chair, we do have one caller on the line. We'll work on getting them put into the meeting now, and I'll let you know when you have them.
Great, thank you. And thank you to everyone who contacted us prior to the meeting as well. Great, thank you. Please, welcome. And please remember to start with your name and address and whether you support or oppose this item.
Vice Chair, this is Sean at the call center. We're going to ask the caller to mute the meeting behind them before we begin so that there's not the feedback.
Right.
So bear with us just a moment.
Uh huh. Okay. Hello?
Now?
Yes, we can hear you now, I think.
Okay. This is Jeff Smith speaking for Axonobel at the 20 Culver Street address. The 2020 CP 011-001 for the rezoning. Some of the comments that were made was that Factory and Woodcrest seem to be low speed. We think they're more medium-high speed with truck traffics on the single-lane roads. And also, we are a heavy manufacturer, not a warehouse, which again is a little bit different than what was some of what was seen on there. So there were some notes in the report that talks about needing greater separation or buffering from adjacent uses due to the significant negative impact. And this would basically reduce any buffering so that we're a manufacturing plant operating 24/7. And when you add the residential traffic to the roads for trucks and all, we think that it would be a concern.
Any further, any further callers, Sean?
Vice Chair, we do have another caller on the line. We're asking them to mute before we place them in.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. And welcome. Please remember to start with your name and address and tell us whether you are in support or opposing this item.
Oh, hi. My name is Tom Smith, and I am the chairman of Smith-Hallivan Parkers. I live at 881 Tyne Boulevard, Nashville. I'm calling in support of this item. I am an adjoining property owner. We own the Polk Center, which is a large mixed-use development at Polk and Woodycrest. And as has already been stated, Woodycrest is an extension of Factory Street. In addition to the Polk Center being occupied by multiple warehouse and office users, approximately 25% of the Polk Center is occupied by the University of Tennessee Nashville facilities, which include the School of Social Work, the IPS Center, and multiple other University of Tennessee Nashville Knoxville operations in Nashville. I'm calling in support of this because one of the things that we have heard in the past is the need for additional housing for folks. The UT operations in the Polk are not all, you know, traditional young students. There are a lot of students of all ages, and we believe that the additional apartments and multifamily that would be constructed here would be conducive to that. This is, this is an evolving neighborhood. The Polk Center is an old electric and electricity manufacturing facility. And even though it is an evolving neighborhood, we believe that that this use is appropriate and that this would be a wonderful addition to to the factory, to the classic Walden Grove.
Caller, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean, do we have additional callers?
Vice Chair, we don't have anyone in the queue at the moment, but as usual, we'll take a pause in case anyone's trying to reach us, and then I'll check back in with you in just a few, in just a bit.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, so I will turn it back to the applicant. Applicant, you will have two minutes for your rebuttal if you have anything, anything further to say.
I have nothing further, Andrew.
Yes, that's why I had to wait until I'm muted. No, nothing further. John, I guess one, maybe one thing to point out would be the the study, the sound study that was conducted, and and you had mentioned that. So I think the the objection that was raised, and also, it can't be listed as a heavy manufacturing distance, district as far as their use because it's NIR, it's an IR-owned property, and that is only consistent with light and medium manufacturing. So maybe just a point of clarification there, but other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah, and this, and this is John Shepherd again. The only other thing I would point out adding to that is just in regard to the the traffic point that was mentioned, we, of course, did perform a, you know, the requisite traffic study, traffic, the, you know, the road network was, you know, entirely capable of handling the traffic impacts that are currently there and and the impacts that we would add through our development, recommendations for a number of, you know, really minor improvements as far as signage and that kind of thing. And and as, but but as as mentioned earlier, we are expanding the right-of-way significantly, expanding the paved surface. You know, I think our neighbors, vast majority of our neighbors have have recognized the the value of that and have provided support, including our biggest neighbor to the immediately to the north, Treveka University, which Dr. Boone, the university, I believe, provided comment that was received by the commissioners.
Applicant, you have 30 seconds.
Nothing further from me, John.
Me neither. Thank you.
Well, thank you both very much. And we have heard from the councilmen already. So I think with that, we're ready to go to discussion with the commissioners. So I am going to keep it easy and go in alphabetical order to get us started. So Commissioner Blackshear, would you like to to start us off?
Sure. Yeah, well, I want to start off by thanking staff, and it was a great and very thorough report, both of the 27A, the plan amendment, and the succeeding item, 27B. And then also, we hear a lot about just from neighbors about the inability to understand certain things that are going on and sometimes the unawareness of things that are going on. So I would also like to thank staff for just their efforts over and above to make sure that the community is engaged, particularly in a time like this when everything is virtual. So it was great to see that there was the WebEx meeting, and then, of course, the streaming on YouTube, and I think on maybe Facebook as well. So that was great. Well, I mean, looking at the site, looking at where it is, and obviously, looking at the plan that's proposed, to me, I think it looks really good. Obviously, a lot of thought was put into it. I am thankful that the applicant was able to participate in the the community meeting and then obviously took some advice or listened to comments from neighboring and incorporated some of that stuff into the plan, so that's good. One of the things obviously that we heard on the phone was just the concern about the traffic, which is something that we as a commission hear all the time, and it is something that's very real. Here in this situation, I think the traffic concerns to me are mitigated a bit. Obviously, we see that, and the staff report is really clear what the traffic change is projected anyway going to be. And obviously, we heard from the applicant that there's going to be some some work done to mitigate that that impact. And this is unfortunate circumstance, we don't have any situation where you could build something and not have any type of traffic increase. But I don't think here in this situation, looking at the streets that are surrounding the area, and then obviously, the improvements that are going to be made, to me, doesn't seem bad enough to 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 think that this item should not move forward. So I would be in support of staff's recommendation on both items, but I'm definitely interested to hear what other commissioners have to say.
This is Director Kemp with the Planning Department.
Oh, goodness. I thought Commissioner Gobble was going on and off mute. Commissioner Gobble, you are, you are next.
I'm, I'm, a lot of people would like to mute me, Mr. Madam Chair. I I agree with Commissioner Blackshear. I congratulate the staff, and and I agree with their analysis, and so I'm willing to support staff's recommendations for both 27A and B.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Haynes.
I agree with my fellow commissioners. This is a rapidly changing area. I think this is a very good change in use and policy by a very good local developer. I think this is a great use next to the university, so I'm going to support staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I echo previous commissioners' comment, and thank you for, Commissioner Blackshear, for thorough analysis for how hard our staff is working to, especially this community plan change and engagement. It is difficult under the circumstances, but our staff and council members for the district and community has engaged to create a great plan. I do have just a minor clarification about the street access. And I think in the report, it says the plan calls for three points of access, one from each street. And as far as I can see from the submitted plan, I think vehicular access is from Factory Street and also Geyser Street. It looks like Culver Street is probably accessible by foot, but I do not see vehicular access. I just want to ask, I don't know if staff can clarify that, or maybe I need to ask applicant.
Hi, Commissioner Johnson. This is Patrick from the Planning Commission staff. That's correct. We will only have vehicular access from Factory and Geyser and not Culver. That was an oversight in the report.
Okay. But as far as walkability, you know, sidewalks and everything, they can access by foot from a power button.
Yes, I believe, I believe that's correct. I'll have the applicant confirm that.
Yes, that hasn't, that specific aspect of the plan has not been developed as far as pedestrian accessibility to Culver. There is quite a bit of grade change in in the elevation between the parking lot there and the and the street level of Culver. But certainly, pedestrian accessibility through the sidewalk network internally and then out to Geyser and out to Factory, where they could then be on the site where the sidewalk network, that will all be, that will all be interconnected as shown in the plan.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. So come back to Patrick. So as far as we all the analysis, all two access is just enough to handle internal traffic for that much housing unit.
All right, yes.
Okay, great.
Go ahead.
That's wonderful. Well, I appreciate that. That was all my concern, and I do agree with previous commissioners. with previous commissioners. I think it's a well thought out plan, and we do need housing. And I love the dog park in the middle, and I would love to see, you know, great landscaping and tree, streetscaping coming into the area. That would be excellent. I'm in support.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Lawson?
Well, the only thing I can do is echo what has already been said by my fellow commissioners. I think it's a good plan, and I would be in support for both applications when called upon.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Murphy, Council Lady Murphy?
Thank you. You know, I think a lot of, of the thoughts already said about this plan have been voiced by my fellow commissioners, so I don't want to be too repetitive. But I do want to say that I, I think that, you know, again, this is a, this is a changing area, and I do appreciate this, this layout looks different than a lot of the complexes that we typically see. And so just looking at it, the first thing that hits me is that, wow, there's green space and not just a huge parking lot. So, so with that, I have no problems with it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sims?
Well, I'm going to do the same thing and just echo how the report given to us is almost exemplary, and I really appreciate the thoroughness, and I really appreciate the applicant taking time to meet with the neighborhoods. As somebody who has a lot of, of changes going on in our neighborhood, just keeping the neighbors informed is just so important. So thank you. I have a technical question about the Culbert Street that Commissioner Johnson brought up, and that is because it was eliminated accidentally from the report, do we need to do anything to correct that, or will that be corrected elsewhere?
Hi, this is Lisa. We can correct it in the minutes version. The traffic study that was prepared and reviewed looked at only the two accesses, and so it was, it's, it's a technical error, and we can correct it in the minutes.
Thank you very much. So I'll move, so thank you.
Good, thanks, Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Tibbs?
I guess I won't echo, I will just make a motion to accept item 27A, the plan agreement.
That is a proper motion. As a reminder, we're voting on, on, first on item 27A and then on 27B. So do I have a motion? A second? Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Any other discussion? Not, I will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Blackshear?
I'm sorry, we actually, we need to vote on those separately.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're voting on 27A right now?
Yes.
Okay, aye for 27A.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Motion carries for item 27A. We are now on to item 27B. Commissioner Tibbs, would you like to make that motion as well?
Yes, I'd like to make motion to approve item number 27B.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? That will do the roll call vote again. Commissioner Blackshear?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Okay, so we are on to our next and, and final item, which is item 278. No, 278, 28.
Margaret, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, thank you.
With Metro Planning, and I will be presenting item 28. Next slide, this is a request to amend the 50 Music Square West specific plan. Next slide, staff is recommending disapproval. Next slide, this site is located at the southeast corner of Music Square West in Chet Atkins Place. The yellow arrow points to the site. Everyone should be familiar with this site, and if not, that is the old United Artists Tower. The existing tower is nine stories in height. In 2017, council approved the 50 Music Square West specific plan on the site. The approved plan permits a mixed-use building, including 200 hotel rooms and a little over 6,000 square feet of restaurant space. Next slide, this is the approved plan. One more slide, yep. This is the approved plan. It is regulatory plan, and it provides development standards, including but not limited to restrictions of bulk standards. Next slide, this is a zoomed-in look at where the SP limits the use to hotel and restaurant. The intent of the change proposed amendment is to add multifamily residential as permitted use. It requires a little change to this plan. Next slide, this slide shows proposed alteration to the approved plan. If approved, it would allow for a maximum of 132 multifamily residential units, or a maximum of 180 hotel rooms. It would not permit a mixture of hotel and residential, however, it does permit restaurant with either of these uses. Next slide, the site is in the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan, and the policy is district office concentration. This policy is intended to maintain, enhance, and create areas focused mainly on office use, but it also can include supporting uses such as retail and restaurant. Policy can also support residential at appropriate locations. Next slide, the site is also within the Music Row Vision Plan. This plan provides additional guidance and is intended to preserve the character of Music Row while allowing for appropriate new development. The overarching theme of the, of the vision plan is to ensure that Music Row continues to be a vital hub of music business and innovation and unique creative cluster within Nashville. The Music Row Vision Plan consists of four districts: Music Row North, Music Row Core, Music Row Village, and Music Row South. The subject site is located in section, subsection 2A of the Music Row Core District. The district focuses on Class A office buildings that cater to music-related businesses. It primarily supports office, however, it also supports ground-floor retail and restaurant uses. It does not permit the proposed multifamily use. The Music Row Core District is also the only district in the Music Row Vision Plan that does not support residential. Next slide, being that the Music Row Core District does not support residential, and the plan provides ample opportunities for residential in other districts, staff is recommending disapproval.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we are now on to opening the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes, Sean, I'm here.
Okay, wonderful. As, as, as you know, you'll have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address, and you may withhold two minutes for rebuttal. Sean will be keeping track of time, and will give you a notice when you are nearing the end of your available window.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I appreciate your time today. My name is John Gore. I'm a principal at Barge Cawthon and Associates Civil Engineers located at 6606 Charlotte Pike. As Jason stated, this property is an existing SP. It's on a half-acre site at the corner of Music Square West and Chet Atkins Place. The existing SP allows for a hotel and restaurant use, and our request is to add multifamily residential as a permitted use. We understand staff's position on this request due to the project's location within the Music Row Vision Plan. However, we feel like there are some unique aspects to this site that we hope you will take into account when considering the request. The main objective of the vision plan in this area of Music Row is to promote Class A office space, which can support Nashville's music industry. We have seen progress towards this goal with several new Class A office buildings, including the CSAC Office Building on Music Square East, the BMG Office Building on Music Circle South, and a new 120,000-square-foot office building currently being constructed at the corner of 16th Avenue South and Tremont Street. One fundamental difference between those sites and this site is the space and the proportions available to accommodate a parking garage that Class A office requires. All three of those buildings have large, efficient, functional below-ground parking garages and circulation core that Class A office demands. Several constraints on this site prohibit that from being possible. The site is, has an existing parking garage below grade that is steep, has low vertical clearance, and tight parking spaces due to the layout of the building columns. It is not feasible to expand this parking garage core due to constraints with the existing structure and the property lines on all four sides. Another goal of the Music Row Vision Plan was to combat market forces which were contributing to large land assemblages defined as a plant, as a site greater than half an acre. This site is constrained on all three sides by streets and alleys, and to the south, there's a new six-story multifamily building, so it cannot be part of a larger assemblage. We believe that the SP plan as proposed meets the vision plan goals in several ways. First, by adding a 6,270-square-foot restaurant space on the ground floor. The original construction of this building included a concrete podium six feet above the street, contributing to a disconnection between the building and the sidewalk. The current plan proposes to remove the top layer of this podium, bringing the new restaurant space down to sidewalk level to help activate the street. The plan also includes new sidewalks and street trees to contribute to the neighborhood's walkability. In addition, we feel like this location is well-suited for residential use. It includes all the metrics that the planning department would normally look at for an ideal infill housing location, including access to jobs, higher education, restaurants, and other amenities, a well-connected pedestrian and bike network, as well as easy access to several transit routes, close access to parks and open space, including Centennial Park and the newly renovated Tony Rose Park. In response to feedback from the community, the development team has also, excuse me, has also proposed to make the lobby and outdoor terrace available for community uses, and has also committed to dedicating 10 of the 132 apartment uses on a permanent basis to reduce rental rate of 15% below market rates with priority to songwriters and other music industry workers. We have worked closely with metro agencies reviewing this request, and have recommendations of approval from all other agencies, including Public Works, the Fire Marshal, and Metro Water Services. The development team has communicated this proposal extensively to the surrounding neighbors and business communities, and has great support, including multiple letters, which I believe you have received, and we are not aware of any opposition to this request. We appreciate your consideration of this request and would ask for your approval. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, and we'll save our remaining time. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we are now ready to take calls from the public who wish to call in. You should have the call-in number on your screens now, and please remember to call in now. You don't need to wait until others have, have called in or have finished speaking, because you will be placed into a queue, and we will take you as you, as you join. And as a reminder, please just call in on this current case, and when you begin your testimony, please state your name and address, and whether you support or oppose the item. Since we're not able to display a timer visually, Sean will be keeping track of time, and she will give you a 30-second warning when your time is nearly up, and she will also let you know when your time is up, so that we can disconnect and move on to the next caller. While we wait for the callers to get into the queue, Lisa, did we have any emails on this item?
Hi, yes, we had five emails in support of the item. We did not receive any emails in opposition. We did receive an email from Councilmember O'Connell late this afternoon that has been forwarded to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Sean, do we have any calls in on this item?
Vice Chair, we currently don't have any callers in the queue, so we'll take a pause in case anyone's trying to reach us, and then I will check back in.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair, we don't have any callers in the queue for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I think we are back to the applicant. You have, you still have two minutes if you have anything else that you would like to add?
We don't have anything to add, but like I say, we'll be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I did want to draw your attention. I see that we just literally a couple minutes ago got an email from Councilman O'Connell. Lucy, if, if everyone is not sitting in front of their computer or looking at their email right now, is it appropriate for us to recap what his email says?
I think that's a great idea. Lisa, let me ask you to just summarize. It's, it's brief, so just summarize or, or read the comments. I think that would be great.
Certainly, I will, it's, it's relatively short, so I will just read it so that I'm not, you know, making any summaries that aren't correct. Commissioners, I wanted to bring to your attention an item the staff has recommended disapproval. Item 2016SP 083003 would amend an existing SP to allow multifamily residential use at a site that was previously approved for a hotel. Given recent updates to policy in the Music Row Study area, I believe it is only reasonable for commissioners to consider approving this request if the applicant can demonstrate how the project would support music-based businesses as a condition of approval per the underlying policy, how the project would support creation of long-term affordable housing as a condition of approval, which is still an urgent need for the city. Otherwise, the recency and importance of the policy for Music Row should generally be retained with integrity. Thanks for your consideration. My best, Freddie O'Connell.
Great, thank you. Since I don't believe we have the councilman on the, on the phone, I just wanted to make sure we got his reaction into the record. Okay, so with that, I am, we're ready to open it up for discussion. Commissioner Haynes, would you be willing to kick us off?
Why did I know you were going to call?
Sorry.
So everyone's familiar with this structure, and I think unfortunately, for the community, this structure is obsolete for office use, which is why several years ago, we approved the hotel use. And I think staff has analyzed this very well, especially given all the effort and hours spent on the Music Row Vision Plan. And that plan specifically calls out areas within the row for multifamily. So unfortunately, we're dealing with an obsolete structure, but a very good current Music Row Vision Plan. So, you know, I think I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Johnson, would you like to go next?
Thank you, Vice Chair, for all years. I'd be happy to. Still, when, I think my motto, deciding if the plan is appropriate or not, I always go back to our rule as a commissioner. I believe as a commissioner, we ought abide by a general plan. And so, you know, our role is to kind of gauge if the staff recommendation, it is within the general plan, which is Nashville Next, and also such as 14 community care plan, as well as specific plan, with specific vision such as Music Row Vision. So considering all this vision, policy, general plan, I could not find staff was, staff's interpretation of the plan was not in line with the general plan. So otherwise, staff's assessment is within the plan, within the policy. I do not see why we should stray from that policy. Considering Music Row Vision Plan was really recent, I think it was adopted June of 2019, and it created specific area, sub-area, which area would be appropriate for the future multi-housing development, and which area would be appropriate for the office and high music use, and so forth. And it was made by many community and stakeholder input. So stray from that policy without merit or without further So stray from that policy without merit or without further input while we got, you know, another policy discussion and just approve one specific area just because, you know, there was alternative plan. It does not suit my test if we can approve or not. So for that sense, I am in support of staff recommendation of disapproval of the submitted plan.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Lawson.
That's a tough act to follow, but I have to agree in principle with what is being said, and I won't rehash it, but I support the staff's recommendation.
Great, thank you. Council Lady Murphy.
Thank you. You know, I'll just reiterate that I don't feel like this plan is, is very old, but it's old in the sense that it has been discussed for a very long time. And so I think this is too soon to be making, to pass something that doesn't fit in this area and this part of the plan. You know, if we were going to do that, then we might as well not go through that whole planning process that I know a lot of blood, sweat, and tears it sounds like went through from, from what I've been told and reading stories about what was going on. So I just, I can't find a way to support this, and, but I do want to give lots of kudos to my colleague Freddie O'Connell for giving us two reasons that if we found them, found this project to, to do that, affordable housing and furthering the music industry, then, you know, that could be a justification. I think that's, that's something that could have been considered, and I didn't hear anything along those lines. So without that, I support staff recommendation.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes, thank you, Chair Lady. I'm really disappointed in this request because this really impacts the Edgehill neighborhood, and we were involved intensely in the original development of both the Music Row Plan and the SP. And there was not one meeting with anybody in Edgehill about this. And it does impact one of our oldest residential communities and the very first African-American community. So that alone would give me a reason to support the staff's disapproval, but the rest of my colleagues gave other good reasons, so I am very much against this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Tibbs.
Yeah, I, I think I did hear them say that there was 10% for affordable housing. Can I just make sure, just clarify that? I thought that's what I heard until Councilwoman Murphy said she didn't hear it. Was that something I actually did hear?
I think you can ask the applicant, is that?
Yes. That is correct. The team has offered to the council member in writing to, there's 132 proposed units, and that 10 of the 132 proposed units would be offered on 15% below market rate specifically to music industry employees.
10, 10.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry. There's unfortunately not some great metrics in place with, with metro right now to how to define and commit to that sort of affordable housing, but that's, that's the offer that they've made to Councilman O'Connell to try to address his concerns.
Okay, yeah, I see. Yeah, I, so that was the thing I was looking at, listening to, consider, but I think even especially after listening to the rest of my commissioners, that it is, I mean, there's been a lot of pain on this study. It does seem like it's not a good time to make a change already to it. I remember we had pain with this, anyway, this building actually, because it was kind of a landmark. But anyway, that's a whole nother story. So I won't go all into everything that other people have said better than I have, so I'm going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs. You know what? I went out of order, so you're not last, but I appreciate your comments and will come back to you. But we still have two commissioners to go. So Commissioner Blackshear?
I'm not voting on this one.
Recused on this one, sorry. Commissioner Gobble?
Well, I agree with the fellow commissioners. I think the, the, the challenge is with such a new process, and I actually participate in some of this, so, you know, I am sympathetic. I do think Councilman McConnell, McConnell, O'Connell did a good job of articulating reasons that it should be considered, and certainly affordable housing for musicians makes a lot of sense, but I think the purpose of all this was to support the music industry, and so I tend to agree with the other commissioners. And I'll second Commissioner Tibbs' motion.
Okay, can, can we do that?
Chair for, this is Lucy. Do you mind if I enter just a couple of additional comments?
Oh, please.
Just so they can be part of the record. I do think, you know, what the applicant noted, that traditionally by all measures, this is the kind of environment where you'd want multifamily in terms of adjacency to growth areas and adjacency to academic and other institutions. I think what I wanted to make sure was in the record is that during the Music Row Plan, one of the core considerations that were of concern to so many had to do with new large-scale multifamily. It was seen as a destabilizing factor to many of the smaller sort of Music Row businesses as well as the office, because once you have those new residents, they're, they're looking for different kinds of uses. And we put that question to Bloomberg, who was advising the staff, and they affirmed that, that the multifamily that was approved, for example, adjacent to this and constructed several years ago probably generated some speculation that was destabilizing along with some other forces. And so some of the commissioners here have mentioned this, you are alluding to this, but I wanted to make sure it's stated plainly, and the reason is because the staff are getting many, many requests for large-scale multifamily larger than this elsewhere on Music Row. And we have consistently been defending the plan. And I think that, again, it's difficult for the reasons that the applicant, for the reasons the applicant made the argument, but I want to make plain that, you know, there were probably very few things that the participants in that study naturally agreed on, but one thing that folks were really concerned about was the multifamily. And so I wanted to put all that clearly into the record, just, just so that folks get an understanding that we're looking not just at this site, but trying to honor kind of the broader implications of, of what, what we want to accomplish for Music Row. And we don't have as much control of the market as I'm sure any one of us may wish, but we can certainly influence the conditions, and that's of concern to us. So I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Should I have Commissioner Tibbs, just so we do everything by the, by the rule, why don't you go ahead and reintroduce your, or do your motion again?
Okay, I make a motion to approve staff recommendations to disapprove.
Okay, and Commissioner Gobble, did you second that?
I did.
Okay, wonderful. Do we have any other discussion? If not, I will go ahead and do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Gobble. Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye, sorry, I didn't unmute.
That's okay. Commissioner, Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Motion carries. And that concludes our, our items for discussion. So now we are on to other business. Commissioner Johnson, anything that you would like to update us on from historic?
Yes, actually, I do today.
All right.
I am very excited to announce newest addition of the Metro Interactive Map. You know, we do have a development tracker, you know, parcel map, or board zoning appeal, BCA tracker. So, you know, any public, general public interested in what's going on in your area can track what's happening as far as application and permit and so forth. So newest addition to that excellent interactive map is Metro Historic Zoning Commission Permit Tracker. So we do have several historic zoning, you know, neighborhood. So if any property requested for the permit for demolition or permit for addition, so now you can go track which parcel and what they're asking for and so forth. So currently that map, you can go to Metro Historic Zoning Commission Meeting Section and go to the meeting area. And then on top, you will have view interactive map of permit application, staff recommendation, and permit. With that, you will get detailed information. So I encourage you to kind of track it and keep familiar with what's happening around your neighborhood. So that's, that's all from me. Thank you.
Wow, sounds great, thank you. Commissioner Haynes, do you have anything that you would like to share from parks?
No report this month.
No report, okay. In terms of an executive report, I don't think that we have one, although we do, I know, have a workshop scheduled in early January. Is that correct, Director?
Yes, it is.
When it's scheduled, is it January 12th or something?
Yes, and I will pull up the date, January 12th, yes.
Okay.
We are going to have a discussion around redistricting.
And since you have the floor, do you have an update, any, anything else that you would like to share?
I do, just a couple of items. So you mentioned that, that we have a workshop session in January that's going to focus on our upcoming redistricting process, which is a challenging and important part of the planning commission's mission, and we work through that with the census update. And so in addition to doing the redistricting, we also have the opportunity to get a lot of data and information about our city and how we're growing. And so the data nerds among us are very excited about that, and we wanted to talk with you about how we're going to approach the project. We have not started yet, but it's, we want to make sure everyone is comfortable with the process and approach, and particularly, we're going to be working closely with Councilmember Murphy to ensure that our engagement with council is really sound. So with that, I have one other issue, and I'm afraid that I need to perhaps call on our attorney, Alex, for some assistance. So we are very careful about, when we update our subdivision regulations, it's, we do it sparingly because we know that these are really important, they're almost rulemakings, and so we are very cautious about our notice procedures. And so you will find in your agenda, item 33, where we gave notice that we're about to give more notice about a subdivision update. And so I want to ask Sean to speak briefly about what that is and what the process looks like, but I need to ask Alex, while Sean is speaking, whether or not the commission needed to vote at all on this item, or if we can just sort of go through our explanation. Again, this is unusual in the sense that we try not to, we're careful about making sure that when we note, when we change our subdivision regulations, that everybody has ample notice. So with that, let me ask Sean to explain what the process is and which aspect of the subdivision regulations that we're going to be looking at, and, and then I can find out if procedurally there are any other steps the commission needs to take. So Sean, with that, let me hand it over to you.
Sure, thanks, Lucy. This is Sean Shepherd with the planning staff. As Lucy mentioned, this feels a little, I think, out of order perhaps because you saw something on your agenda, but you don't have any information about it yet. But this is a public notice step where there will be a hearing date noted here, January 21st, to consider some amendments to the subdivision regulations. This came out of direction that the commission gave to staff to take a look at lot width or lot frontage requirements, particularly in areas that are outside of neighborhood maintenance policy. And so staff has been doing some evaluation and has come up with some draft language to address that direction in the subdivision regulations. This is the beginning of a period where the public can review that draft and provide comments to staff. So what is going to happen, or is currently happening, kind of as we speak even, is that there will be information on the planning website, on the Development Services website, sent out to various email lists that are maintained by planning and codes that people subscribe to for information. There will be publication in the newspaper, and we'll also be sending out notice to other known stakeholders and via our social media channels to make folks aware that the, the draft is posted and that they are welcome to comment. And we'll take that comment until January 8th, at which time we'll kind of roll it all into our staff analysis and report, which will be prepared for you before the January 21st meeting, when you'll have an opportunity to review and discuss and hold a public hearing on the proposal. So this is just, as Lucy mentioned, the, the first step of setting clear public notice that that is going to be handled at the January 21st meeting, and staff will be taking comments and continuing our analysis in the meantime.
The step we're taking now is just to set a date, and I, I think we're proposing to present the items in January, and so I think we could entertain questions now if you have them about the process, but I think unless Alex disagrees, we would probably want to vote on just the date. We're, we're just letting people know that this is the process and the, the opportunity to review the information is in January. Is that stated well? Yes.
This is Alex. Yeah, you'll just need to vote on the date. That's under your, your rules under subsection G. You just have to vote on the date, so that will require but.
So before we, we ask that, do you guys have any questions or any, I realize this feels a little more drawn out than we're accustomed to, but we take the subregs very seriously. So any, any questions? Yeah, yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I think we may, if anybody go to link on what portion of the subdivision regulation amendment was requested, it would be clear if some people go to the specific site and then read the language. But it looks like, you know, it's not, we are not proposing entire subdivision regulation amendment, but only specific, you know, pertaining to infill development, especially on outside of neighborhood maintenance. So you may want to kind of tell general public in this time, but we will be discussing on January 21st is narrow scope of this specific section of the subdivision regulation. Otherwise, we may be bombarded with lots of comment. So I just thought, just want to throw it out.
Thank you, that's great feedback. I do also want to let the commissioners know, we'll follow the same process. So right now, we're doing the lot width look, which was the first request or recommendation we got from the commission. We're going to follow up with a separate sort of rulemaking regarding the cluster lots that we've discussed as well, but we're not there yet. So we're starting with this, this update here, and we'll take that guidance, Commissioner Johnson, and, and make sure everyone understands this is a second. and, and make sure everyone understands this is a section of, of the subregs. Thank you. Any other questions on this? Okay.
So Lucy, can you confirm the date? So is the date our, one of our upcoming, um, Planning Commission meetings, right?
Yes. Sean, can you confirm the date for the motion?
Yes, it is, um, the date that we're proposing is the January 21, January 21st of 2021 meeting. That is your regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting in January. It's a little offset from your usual pattern because we accounted for the holidays when you adopted your calendar for 2021, so.
Okay, so, um, so any further questions from, from the commissioners? Anything else, Lucy, that you want to, that we need to go over?
Nope.
Or go ahead and, so go ahead and call for a vote or a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, Chair, this is Councilwoman Kathleen Murphy. I wanted to give just a quick legislative update. It follows Council, Commissioner Johnson's comments about the Historic Commission's tracker. And I'm very glad that they are catching up to the BZA and to planning. Next week on Wednesday, some of the council members and I will be meeting to discuss proposed legislation to require mailouts, physical postcards and letters for planning, I mean, I'm sorry, Historic Commission items, the same way that Planning and BZA and now Stormwater requires, you know, mail notification to, to neighbors and potentially signs as well. We'll be working on, you know, how small of a project or how big of a project will trigger that? Because I know Historic typically, you know, offers the overlays as no cost to the owner ever. But this is something that I think, at least I've heard from my constituents and heard from others across the county, that it's, that it's needed so neighbors can actually have some input. And so while that doesn't necessarily affect the Planning Commission, overlays and such, at least initially, come through us after Historic before going to the council. And so I just wanted to let y'all know of that because again, it seems to be my theme this year is that we've just got to add some more transparency when it comes to, to situations where land use and additions and aesthetics are changing and, and overlays and expectations. So just wanted to share that. And if any commissioners had any feedback or personal experiences, I would love for them to shoot me an email and, and share with me. Thank you.
Great.
Commissioner.
So I did have to go back and return. So yeah, I thought we had to go back and return to a vote on, on when we were going to hear the revisions to portions of the subdivision regs.
Yes, and all you're voting on again is you're just setting a hearing date and letting people know that you're going to hear something related, an amendment to the subregs in January. So it's just, you're just setting the date for the vote.
Okay, so can I, so is it a motion? No, it's actually a vote. We're going to call a vote to, um, to vote, to review the portion of the subregs on January 21st, 2021. So I think I'll just go ahead and do a roll call vote for that.
That's fine.
Okay, Commissioner Blackshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
And Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Great. Well, I think we are officially through our agenda, so nicely done. We're done before 6:00 PM. So I want to wish you all a wonderful holiday. I hope some, some rest and relaxation at the end of this crazy year of 2020. Lucy, we do not yet know about our meeting location in, in early 2021. Is that correct?
Thank you for, for asking. We do not. And so we're just going to continue along. I think Chairman Atkins and I have expressed to you that, that so long as we're able to continue with the remote meetings, that we will pursue that. And, and so long as we have support and approval from, from the governor's office, we, we feel like these meetings are going well, but always welcome your feedback offline on that front. And we'll let you know as soon as, as soon as we know.
Okay, so our next meeting, our next meeting is January 21st. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we will be waiting to hear from you. Hopefully that it will be another, another remote or a virtual meeting, but we'll wait for an update from you. So with that, happy holidays to everybody. And thank you all for so much for sticking through and helping out with us this year. And look forward to.
Vice Chair Farah, apologize. I did have one more thing to say. I meant to mention, I was reading the deferral items. Because Sean mentioned, because the January 21st meeting is at an, on an off week from when we normally meet, we did have to choose an alternate location should we have to physically meet. And so should we have to physically meet, the meeting would be at the School Administration Building. So if we're not virtual, it would be at the School Administration Building. So I did want to mention that for those that are watching.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Okay, well, with that, I will sign off and wish you all happy holidays again. And we'll see you in January. Take care, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.